Good evening, and welcome to the Allegheny Clarion Valley School District Workshop for the month of June 2021. This evening, we will use this time to review the school board agenda and prepare to adopt the 2122 School District Budget on June 17th, 2021, and we will be ready to submit this budget to the Pennsylvania Department of Education by June 30th, 2021. Since this workshop is being conducted virtually, I ask that all school board members and administrators keep their mics muted until they're ready to speak. I plan to take a pause after each agenda item for school board members to simply jump in or raise your hand if you have further questions. Keep in mind that we will be conducting an executive session immediately following the workshop, review the end of year Act 44 of 2018 School Safety Report, and to discuss personnel items. Once completed, I will submit this report to the Pennsylvania Department of Education and the Office of Safe Schools. And at this time, we'll move right into the agenda. Tammy, could you please start by doing the rule call?
Carrie Armaglass?
Here.
Megan Dreher? Jennifer Fight? Diane Page?
Here.
Corey Sherman? Lena Southworth?
Here.
Jermaine Stumpf?
Here.
Kelly Chuliger? And Mark Bertel?
I know we're missing members this evening. Jen Fight is going to jump on. She's in California working and will be a little bit late, so make sure you record that. Tammy, just to ensure that we have a call.
David, Megan, Megan will be joining us shortly. She was having trouble finding the link, so I'm gonna send that to her while you continue.
Okay. Thank you, Karen. I'm moving down through. We don't have anybody here to present from the public and no presentations from the staff. Moving right into the consent agenda, letter A, we do have one conference in front of you, and that's from Wesley Crowe-Bauer. He's one of our high school teachers and he does teach science. Being recommended by Dr. Jordan as well as other staff members for him to participate in the computer science discovery course. And that course is going to be for grades seventh and eighth. And that money will be covered with Title II aid and local money to cover the cost of the workshop. Letter B under the consent agenda is to continue on with Doug Mays as a substitute for the principals and superintendent during the 2122 school year. Doug helped out quite a bit this year for the principals and he's more than willing to come back to help next year as well. And then letter C is going to be a retroactive approval with the band boosters. They had a fundraiser up in the high school LGI on May 26th from 3:00 to roughly 5:30. Are there any questions on the consent agenda before we move into finance and purchase? Moving on down through, I'm gonna skip over letter A through H and we'll pay the bills and have a detailed discussion next week on those items. But letter I, I'd like to just share with the school board that each year we approve these secondary depositories. The first ones, the pligot account for capital reserves. We also have in front of you the athletic account, the activities account, the cafeteria account, non-interest bearing account, scholarship account, capital projects account, and the first program. And keep in mind that number two through eight, that's all with farmers. Moving on to page two, we do have a discussion this evening about the fringe benefits. Keep in mind that these are contract and part of the contracts and we're obligated to, you know, move forward with these numbers. And we're just doing this for budgetary purposes. The first group and second group can be linked together. That's part of our medical insurance, that's the Highmark Blue Cross Blue Shield PPO Blue Plan. And the first group is the support staff and inactive support staff, and then the second one is the professional staff and meet and discuss. In front of you, you'll see various costs ranging from individual medical and prescription drug plan, which is 714.78 cents per month. And then it goes on up to parent and child, parent and children, husband and wife, and family. And you'll see ultimately as a family, it's just about $2,095 per month. And right below that's the professional staff meet discussed, the numbers are virtually the same. And on the bottom of page two, there's a frozen inactive PSCEA, ESPA teacher and administrator group. Aaron, on the top of page three, we continue to move down through there. We also have a group that's the inactive PSCEA teachers and administrators, and you'll notice those numbers are the same as well. So according to the contract, there are still some retirees that are on the healthcare package that we have. Right beneath that is the vision insurance, and that's from the Vision Benefits of America. And you'll see a couple groups there. That's the faculty administrators and meet discuss, and it stayed the same. So you'll see the 2021 and then the 2122 prices and for an individual is 848 and 1786 for a family. And then the support staff is right below it, slightly different, but the numbers is the same from the 2021 to the 2022 school year. And it's $6.38 per single and 1368 per family. And then beneath there, you'll notice the disability insurance, and for the faculty, it's 1058. Administrators and meet discuss, it's 1150. And then finishing off on page three is our dental insurance, and keep in mind we go through United Concordia. And as for payment of the claims, this is for the faculty administrators and meet discuss. And not much, but believe it or not, slightly lower for the 2122 school year. And you can see the rates down there for a singles 2139 per month, and then a family 6416. And then there's also the Cobra dental coverage too that could be available for people if they want to choose to pick that up. On the top of page four, we have the non-professional support staff, and again, very similar, slightly lower, 2139 for a single and then up to an employee and spouse is 4278. Beneath that is the life insurance, and that's from CM Regent Solutions. And it's, it has stayed the same, and that's for not only the professional but non-professional group as well. Underneath that, you'll see the Act 93 and then superintendent, and the prices are the same from the 2021 to the 2122 school year as well. Are there any questions for myself, Tammy or Emmy before we move on down through the finance and purchase section? Hearing none, we'll move into letter K, and at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Emmy. She's with us this evening. And she's going to share her screen and present some information on a resolution with the Homestead-Farmstead Tax Solution Resolution. And at this time, Emmy?
Oh my gosh, what happened to it?
I'll come over.
No, you're fine. I got the wrong one. Oh my gosh. David, you need to come over. Where's the resolution? Never mind, I found it. It's down at the bottom. Sorry. Yeah, it's okay.
I don't know if you're sharing. Did you share your screen?
I did.
Click on this thing to open it up. Yeah, not without a screen. And then you're.
Okay. Sorry. Okay, so under the Taxpayer Relief Act, the school district is to reduce homestead and farmstead properties that have been approved by the county. So in December, the school district sends out applications to all the property owners, and they have till March 1st to apply. And then the county approves them and sends the file to me. So under this, this is the resolution, and it's showing that PD is giving us 279,807.91. And I had additional funds left over from this past year of 608.51. So we were able to come up and we're going to be able to give $184.90 to each homestead and each farmstead. So how that all comes together is I have the worksheet on here also. So the total came to 280,416, and there was 188 homesteads in Armstrong, 160 in Butler, 571 in Clarion, 567 in Vinango, and then the farmsteads are in the lower. And then not everybody got the complete amount because they didn't, the real estate taxes weren't as high as the amount that was given out. So this, these go back into the pot. So then it just calculates out and it comes down to giving out $184.90. And with the calculation, we're like 40 cents that we should have left over for the year and whatever is left over for next year, then we have to add it to the pot. You won't see on your real estate taxes that it's $184.90. You will see a minus the assessed value. So the assessed values that will, in Armstrong, they would see $5,551 in Butler, they'd see $2,637 in Clarion, it's $3,268, and Vinango 13,245, which calculates out, the assessed values would calculate out to that $184.90. Does anybody have any questions? All right.
Thank you, Emmy. We appreciate that. You can stop the shitter by hovering over the top of your screen. Perfect. We're not done, we're not done with Emmy quite yet, but she's going to take a little bit of a break, just working down through finance and purchase. Letter L, we have a motion in front of you to approve use the federal programs and grants that will apply for throughout the school year as part of the 2122 budget. We have everything in there to the best of our ability. Just keep in mind that we do have the ESSR money coming in here and the businessman, business office as well as Carrie Longo will be working on that narrative in the near future. Beneath that, letter M, and N, that's to approve Zach Sheckel as our solicitor at $100 per hour, $30 per hour for legal assistant time. And that's for the 2122 school year, and Zach's keeping his rates the same as the previous year. In addition, we also work with Mark Kuhar. Mark's now with McDonald, Illig, and Jones in Britain. And he's gonna provide legal service for personnel items, and he's at $210 per hour and $175 per hour for an associate. And then his paralegal is $90 per hour. Any questions on those items before we dive into the main section of the evening? And that is the 2122 school budget. Hearing none, I'll turn it back over to Emmy. And Aaron, if you could let her share the screen, she's ready to go with the budget.
Where does it go? I shared the screen and now it comes up blank.
I should, can you go on? Take your cursor on that.
Okay.
You know what? Stop the share, and I think you might have grabbed the wrong one. Now you've shared again. Yeah, go on to share. And then I think it's.
That one now. Oh, yes, fine. I don't need. I did do that, but. Okay, sorry. Okay, so the only changes that were made to the budget since our last board meeting, we had the, we received the final totals for the title programs. So the Title I program, I had in the budget 213,717, and we're only going to receive 211,517. In the Title II A, I had in the budget 28,769. We're only going to receive 27,116. And then the Title IV, I had in the budget 16,867. We're only going to receive 15,902. So I deducted $4,818 out of the revenue for federal programs, which then gave us a total revenue of 15,089,649. And the revised, and the revised expenditures, it changed on the ES control upgrades. I originally had in the budget 417,500. When the bid came in, it came in at 497,980. So we had to add 80,475 for, out of the ESSR II money for the ES control upgrades. That brought our expenditures after the change to 16,488,817. So we, right now, the budget is at 1,399,168. The only thing that I would show you on the budget is I just wanted to go over the, this is the revenue page, which I changed in the federal programs down here, bringing us to 15,089,649. And then what I did want to show you also is what the real estate tax rate will be for Armstrong is 33.31. For Butler, 70.11. For Clarion, 56.58. And for Vinango, 13.96. We should receive from the real estate tax 3,147,056. It shows that we are within our index, which our index was 4.1%. These, this is the homestead-farmstead that I just talked about. This is the millage amount that will, you will see on all your real estate taxes. And this is the total homestead-farmsteads that we had. So it came to 1,533 homestead-farmstead reductions, and our medium assessed value for the four counties is 68,341. This is again the tax information, the assessed values, what we plan to get, which would be the dollar amount that would generate from the real estate millage. And then they subtract out the homestead-farmstead, and then we collect at 89%, so 3,147,056. And then the only other thing we're in, within the index on, on every, on all our taxes. And then just the other change would be down here in the 44,000 that we changed the construction for the ES controls. And those are the changes, and it comes out to that our budget then is 16,488,817. Is there any questions on the budget?
No questions on my end, but once again, Emmy, thank you for all the work that you put into it and all the knowledge that you've shared to Andrea with that process. I've been working on that since pretty much January, so there was a lot of work and a lot of changes, so we do appreciate your work. Okay, Aaron, on the top of page five, I'm just going to address, and Emmy touched on it briefly, but the HVAC system down here at the elementary school came in a little bit higher than what was originally budgeted. So the motion in front of you with letter P is to approve the correct amount, so $442,980 for the replacement of the controls. And just keep in mind, that's going to circulate more consistent air from the outside. The quality will be better and the consistency will be more appropriate throughout the day. Right now, Mark has a hard time regulating. So in the wintertime, there's certain rooms that are cold at 10 o'clock in the morning, and then they're too hot at 2:00 in the afternoon. So the new HVAC control system is going to regulate the temperature in all the rooms down here at the elementary school in conjunction of circulating better air. So we just want to make sure that for auditing purposes, we are accurate with our numbers. Better Q, that's eliminating Megan Dehart from the high school money market activities account. And then letter R is to add Courtney Chalmers to that account, and Courtney's up working in our district wide secretary position from the high school. And both Megan and Courtney's been doing a great job with their transition. Letter S, this is a discussion about a service that we're looking to partner with the Linda Mood Bell Learning Process. I've talked to Mrs. Sherman and, and Mrs. Smith as well as a number of teachers. And this is a program that we're moving into year two, and it's a $25,000 cost to bring in a coach to work with our teachers on this Linda Mood Bell process. Once we're done with year two, we should have some in-house coaches here that continue on and be able to educate some of their colleagues on this process. And we'll be discussing this between now and next week. I've shared some information and some positives from the current teachers with the school board already. And it's just an ongoing discussion, so keep that in your mind as we move forward through the agenda this evening. Any questions about the items that we covered through financing and purchase? Hearing none, we'll move right into personnel. Letter A, we have a staff who's requesting a little bit of time off. Moving into letter B, Kirsten Collins, she was our Title I instructional aide at the elementary school, and she submitted her letter of resignation at the end of the school year. So we're looking to accept her resignation and then post that position in-house, and that would be a Title I instructional aide position. And then we have a number of coaches that have submitted a letter of resignation. Anthony McGarvey, head basketball coach, John Irwin, head varsity and head varsity baseball and JV basketball coach. And then we also have Mike Wagle, who submitted a resignation for head varsity boys' coach and assistant varsity baseball coach. And then Lane Laramore submitted a resignation for assistant varsity baseball coach as well. And then we have a motion below that to accept their resignations. We're gonna continue to discuss that, and we'll have a final determination for voting meeting on June 17th. Letter I, that's a request from Colin McNanny to remain a volunteer with the varsity football program. Colin was an AC Valley graduate and has volunteered for a number of years now, and Colin's a real good young man, and it's good to have him back with the program. Letter J is a MOA with ACBA and Julie Raybuck for summertime cyber work. So as we're aware, last year Julie put in a lot of time enrolling students, doing end-of-year grades for the students that are in the AC Valley Cyber Service Program. And again, with anticipating a number of students continuing through with that program, we do have a MOU in front, or MOA in front of you this evening. And we've reviewed it, Jennifer Fight, myself, and the representatives from ACBA finally came to an agreement. And with administrative discretion, we're going to provide Julie with time throughout the summer to work with the students. And a little bit later on, we're gonna be talking about enrollment class size and staff for the 2021 school year, and we'll take a look at those cyber numbers. Moving down through, letter K, the school board and the finance committee, we've been working with attorney Kuhar to get contracts in place for the AC attorney too hard to get contracts in place for the A C Valley School Police, the Food Service Director and members of the meet discuss. And then we also have the athletic trainer too, that we haven't talked a whole lot about, but that's a one-year contract and it's up in June as well. On June fourteenth, we will be meeting with Attorney Kuhar and reviewing some of the terms within the contracts. And we're hoping to have these contracts solidified in front of the board for vote on June seventeenth. There's still a lot of work that needs to go into it, but we've been reviewing and moving in the right direction. Are there any questions about personnel at this time before we move down through instructional services? Hearing none. Aaron, on the top of page six, we do have the annual enrollment class size data and staff for the twenty twenty one school year. And if you have this document handy on page two, we have a breakdown of the elementary school enrollment. And there's a five-year analysis. Back in two thousand sixteen seventeen, we had a total three hundred and fifty-two kids in the elementary and right now we're three hundred and thirty-two. Back in two thousand sixteen seventeen, we had thirty point eight, we had a point eight staff on at the time. And now we have thirty-two teachers. In addition to that, we have eighteen elementary students who are on A C Valley Cyber Service Program. And then we have eighteen students who are on the outside A C Valley Cyber Service Program. So keep in mind that those numbers are not added into the three thirty-two that I've referenced earlier. Those students are outside of our SIS information. On page three of this document, you'll see a high school enrollment comparison. Back in two thousand sixteen seventeen, we had three hundred and thirty-four kids at the junior senior high school. And today we have two hundred and forty-seven kids up there. Back in sixteen seventeen, we had thirty teachers. Twenty twenty-one, we had twenty-eight teachers up there. And the Career Center, we've been also declining our numbers up there unfortunately. Back in the two thousand seventeen eighteen school year, we had forty-four students attending. And this past year, we had thirty-four students attending. I know Dr. Jordan and Mrs. Lego are working on the schedule right now. So we'll have updated information for you some point in the near future. In addition to that, we have twenty students in the A C Valley Cyber Service Program. And we have twenty-one students in the outside cyber program. So as a total district, we have thirty-eight kids in the A C Valley Cyber Service Program and thirty-nine kids who are out in other cyber programs. And just keep in mind, part of that thirty-nine that are out there, you know, a student who is identified and has a disability, it's costing us over forty thousand dollars per student. There's been a lot of discussion on the Hill about Senate Bill One and Senate Bill seven thirty-three. And that's the aid and voucher programs and, you know, just everybody very concerned about those two bills in addition to the cyber charter reform. So all I can ask is that school board members continue to advocate for public education and contact your senator. We've all made a mad rush to get a hold of Scott Hutchison and tell him to vote no on Senate Bill one seven thirty-three. So I think it's stuck in the Senate right now and let's hope that it doesn't get out. The next page with the student enrollment is a total number and it goes back to two thousand four or five. And we had nine hundred and sixty-nine students here on campus. And then today in two thousand twenty twenty-one, we have five hundred and seventy-nine students. And declining student enrollment is concerning for everybody. And, you know, the finance committee has talked about it and we've been looking at programs and, you know, it's unfortunate because we have such a wonderful school here that we have limited number of students. And then I'll finish off this section with a, just a quick review of staffing information for the twenty twenty-one school year. We have five administrators down. Just keep in mind that it's Dr. Jordan, myself and Mrs. Sherman as principals. And then we also had down there Emmy Faust, Andrea Stewart as our five administrators. So, you know, with Emmy retiring, we're actually four administrators. We have eleven staff members. We have fifteen custodian and maintenance staff members. We have two school nurses, ten aides, six secretaries, sixty teachers, two counselors, just about three technicians, one school psychologist, one police officer, one study hall monitor, one attendance officer, one athletic director and one athletic trainer. So we have a total of a hundred and twenty employees here at A C Valley. Any questions about the information that I've just shared with you as it relates to the numbers of staff and students? Hearing none, we'll continue on down through. In front of you, we'll also have the graduating class of twenty twenty-one. Absolutely wonderful group of young people. And I think we have them prepared to move on to the next phase of their lives. And for those who participated in graduation, thank you for all your help. And it was absolutely wonderful again. So it was really good to give those kids some kind of normalcy there in their last days at the school up there. So thank you all. In addition to that, we have Dr. Jordan submitted the twenty-one twenty-two fundraising calendar. And if you took some time to take a look at that, you'll see it's quite full, but there are some openings. So if anybody needs to get on the fundraising calendar, make sure that they contact Dr. Jordan and he'll be able to work in conjunction with them. Moving down through, we don't have anything in front of you for policy right now. PSBA is working on an upper policies for the fall. So I'd imagine June and August will have a host of policies in front of you. I talked to Mark today. We don't have any facilities. He's going to provide a detailed report next week. But he's working with the pavement company right now. They came in, they surveyed our parking lots in the main drive. And they're starting to paint up areas where they're planning on paving. He has the asbestos ready to be removed up at the high school and preparing to install the new high school cafeteria floor. He's waiting to hear back about the the controls for the elementary elevator. And we met with the McClure Company last week and we're setting up a timeframe to get them in here. So the McClure project will be in relatively small scale compared to the last one. We're getting all the clearances pulled together. We're going to have meetings. And I'm going to assist Mark and Dan and James with that development of all those projects. So we'll be meeting and we'll do our best to get those projects done before the fall, before the start of the school year. In addition to that, I did go down to the Foxborough Water Authority meeting on Monday and had a very good discussion with them and we're working in collaborative fashion. And there will be more to report on that, but just a couple of areas, we do have the Clarinet County Commissioners involved. And they're going to be working with us for possible grant funding. The Foxborough Water Authority is moving forward with a different company, a different solicitor. And I did make a request last night to have somebody here on campus the first week of school in the fall in case we have any kind of water issues. So we're hoping that, you know, like in years past, we don't tax the system too much and have any kind of breaks. So I think we're moving forward with our facilities at this time. Mark does have a number of students down here working and they're, they're all doing a real good job. Moving down into transportation, we only have one request and that's from Jennifer Calendar. She's going to be adding Emily Shoemaker as a bus driver. And I know Emily has most of her information here on campus at this time. And what she does has an interview with Mrs. Sherman and go ahead and add Emily as a driver. Any questions on those items before we move down into miscellaneous? Okay, we have a number of reports that we'll come back to, but the big item that we discussed with the Athletic Committee is a an agreement with the A C Valley School District and the Keystone School District for a cooperative boys and girls soccer program for the twenty-one twenty-two and twenty-two, twenty-three school year. And we had a good discussion. Keystone's already approved that co-op, you'll see their signatures on it. I talked to Mr. McCormick, who's the acting superintendent from Keystone, and they're excited to have us on board. I did tell him as well as the Athletic Committee that myself personally, I'm not in favor of a co-op for soccer. And the reason why is because we just covered the enrollment numbers and our declining student enrollment is concerning to me to continue to maintain the programs that we currently have. And I'd like to see us table this would be my recommendation until you know, sometime in the future. But right now, I don't believe this is going to benefit any of our programs or the students at this time. It can provide them with additional opportunities. But right now, I just don't know if we really are in a position to take on another activity. But I can open it up at this time for any other members from that Athletic Committee that may want to address their perspective. I see Dr. Jordan's on here, the other members, if anybody wants to weigh in.
David, just refresh my memory from the meeting. Did we, did we survey the kids to see how many? Did Scott survey the kids to see how many people would, how many students would be interested in soccer if we offered it?
I hope Dr. Jordan will jump on because Scott did, but I don't have those numbers in front of me. I think they were under ten on each, but I'm guessing. I think it was like an eight to nine number.
It's just not coming to my brain.
I know we talked about it, but I just, it wasn't a large number. And that's why I think the Athletic Committee as a whole thought, okay, this won't necessarily impact. And it may not, you know, this year, but who knows about next year of the year down the road. And that's the concern I have. You know, I think we finally have this co-op up and running with union, with football and all those other sports that we have together. And I'd like to continue to focus in on those. Anybody else like to speak?
Doc, Dr. McDavid, I'd like to just mention that you are correct in your summary of those numbers regarding that, that survey. And just to remind everyone, we actually had a survey back when we were going to co-op with Karn City and we had similar numbers that some signed up, said they were interested. But actual sign-ups ended up being only a couple of students.
Just to pop on to, I did ask Scott when we had talked about that if because, well, David was concerned about, you know, pulling students from other sports. And I did ask Scott that if we knew if it was like any conflicting athletes. And I don't think that he had like a positive answer, but I believe he did say that he didn't think that any of them were athletes that were already in fall sports.
Thank you, Megan.
And this is Jen. Hi guys, sorry, I'm, I'm late. I'm working in California. So it's a little hard for me to get here tonight. But I did want to just say, and I don't know if we talked about this at all. You know, in looking at it there, I, I do recall some discussion about not having a lot of athletes right now in fall sports. However, you know, keep in mind that this isn't just for this upcoming year. This is, you know, looking towards the future and that doesn't mean that's always going to be the case. And we want to be careful that, you know, we're not impacting all of our fall sports as it is right now. I mean, when you look at it, kids are spread pretty thin in terms of doing multiple sports as it is. So I guess that's the way that I look at it is, you know, overall, it's a pretty small number that have an interest right now. And we have multiple opportunities for kids to play sports. So I guess I'm just not real in favor of taking on another one at this particular point.
I had a question. I didn't remember what the contract said, but if we sign it, we only pay if kids sign up to go. Is that correct? Or is there a fee whether we have kids or not?
Would be five hundred dollars per student. And keep in mind, it's not a co-op like with Union. It'll be Keystone Soccer Program. And then we'll have to figure out transportation, which we haven't gotten into that yet.
So I guess my thought was if we go ahead and sign it and we don't have anybody sign up, then we're not out any money then at that point. Is, is that correct?
Yeah, I, yeah, I think so, correct. Yeah, yeah, you're right, Jimmy.
I guess I was just thinking, since we had already offered it with Karn City. And I, I wasn't for renewing the one with Karn City just because of the distance that the kids had to travel in order to get there every day. But I just thought, and you know, if there was still some interest in soccer, doing it with Keystone would be the more logical solution. And again, you know, I don't, I personally don't see any difficulty in offering it and seeing if kids are interested in it, since we, like I said, we already had the one with Karn City. So are there going to be kids that thought, oh, okay, well, if there was still soccer, I would go ahead and play and then there won't be one. And but if we aren't, don't have to pay unless the kid signs us up, then why not go ahead and at least offer it and see what happens?
Thank you for your input. Anybody else? Any comments or questions about the potential soccer co-op? Okay, moving down into, is there any old business or new business? I do apologize, I skipped right over any kind of board concerns at the beginning of the meeting. So before we, we finish it off, because we're just about done with the agenda, I wanted to turn it over to see if there's any other discussion points. And I know Jen joined us a little bit late. I'm not sure if you needed any clarification on any of the items that we covered before you got on this evening.
Um, I don't, I don't have any questions at this particular point. I mean, we, you and I covered things in our, in our preparatory meeting, so I'm good right now. At this point.
Anybody else? All right, we'll go ahead and finish off the workshop at this time. And the school board members, I did send you on a Zoom link. I'll resend that out there just for ease of access. But we'll just take a short five-minute break, make the transition and we'll meet back up to discuss Act forty-four of two thousand eighteen and to talk about personnel. I thank you all for your time this evening and have a great night.